Here.
Mr. Harpurd.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Praise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess I have to get dressed.
Okay, promo of the minutes for the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, special reports, there are none. Audience comments. As we, as our practice, any comments will be submitted in written form. We have comments, Mr. Lowery.
Yes, we have one from Bob Simmons from 170 Simmons Road. I saw at the last council meeting that the township is trying to get federal grant to help develop Rolling Hills Park. I would feel much better about getting this money if the township had acquired the property under different ethical circumstances. The township used its power of eminent domain to take the Rolling Hills Country Club. Then the landowner sued Peters Township, and the township and the taxpayers had to pay fourteen million dollars. So you are sending out a message to other communities that it's okay for local government to just take privately owned property, get a federal grant, and build a park. That just seems wrong to me. Peters Township has also clearly shown that the property that it takes can and will be used for commercial development. For example, is the property along Valley Brook Road. The township used its powers to take this property years ago and now has leased it for a commercial development. I would naturally assume that in the future, the township will do the same with the frontage along McMurray Road at Rolling Hills. So if the township is going to take grant money for a park, and then the township should put in place some laws that prohibit the park property from being developed, Peters Township should not be in the real estate business.
That's all.
Mr. Books, I think, has a question.
I just want to say that with respect to that audience comment from Mr. Simmons, that there are a lot of inaccuracies in what he has stated.
Yes. Yes, and I think there's-
And I don't want to spend the time going through them and re-explaining everything that actually did occur and why it occurred. But I didn't think that we should just leave it like that on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well said.
Very quickly, I won't take much time. Mr. Lowery was kind enough to send me a copy of the suggested or expected income and expenditures for the pool, the aquatic center. In reading it, I got the impression that the projected income was a little on the optimistic side. And since it's based largely on weather, and I think I've read that they were talking about ninety-one days that the pool would be open, I think that's a little much, given the temperate, the temporary weather conditions that we have during the summer months. I would suggest that we go back and look at and do an average for the last five years and see just how many out of the ninety-one days during June, July, and August would actually have served as days to use the pool. In other words, where it didn't rain or whatever. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All righty. Unfinished business, there is none. New business, authorize the appropriate township official to sign general release agreement between Joseph Luft and Peters Township.
Due to an illness, Mr. Luft, the township's building code official, has not been able to work since December eleventh. It's unclear, based on our conversations with Mr. Luft and information provided by his doctor, if and when he'll be able to return to work. Having had discussions with Mr. Luft, he recognized that the burden that places on the township, particularly at this time of the year with regard to building inspections, one of the things that, at this time of the year, we are particularly busy with, the number of building permits that are being submitted. What I have been able to do with the assistance of our labor attorney is to negotiate a settlement agreement with Mr. Luft, where his status as an employee would end as of April thirteenth. He would be able to continue to collect short-term disability until May twenty-eighth, and with or without disagreement, that would be true. The one thing that it will do is that Mr. Luft will forego collecting long-term disability benefit. The only thing that the agreement provides for that Mr. Luft would not otherwise be able to collect is the amount that has been contributed to his pension plan up to this point, which is approximately fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars. He's not vested in our pension plan yet, but what will happen is, when he is terminated as an employee, that money will all be forfeited back to the township. So it, to enter this agreement, will not cost the township any money that it hasn't already expended as compensation for Mr. Luft. And both I and the Labor Council believe that this is an equitable settlement and will give us an opportunity to move forward with hiring a new building inspector. So it's going to be my recommendation that council authorize the appropriate township official to sign the general release agreement with Mr. Luft.
So moved. Any other discussion?
So, yeah, just one, so that distribution would have been, how old is he?
He is in his late fifties, I believe.
Okay, so he would have paid a penalty had he taken that as a distribution.
Yes. Well, he could not even gotten to it because he hasn't, he has not vested-
Yeah, I get that. So this would be just a W-two-
W-two, including his wages, it'll be social security dependent, so.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, he has not contributed that money. That money's solely been contributed-
By the township.
By the township.
Yes.
So we put that into an account.
Yes.
We're going to write him a check for the fifteen-seven.
Yes.
So he'll get the cash, and then the account we put the money in is coming back.
Well, what's going to actually happen is the money will be forfeited into the pension fund, and when we go to make the next pension contribution for all employees, that fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars will be there as an offset against the obligation that we have. It will never leave the pension fund.
So it's a net-net?
Yes. Yeah.
Sort of.
And he's going to stay eligible for long-term disability?
No.
That's going to end?
Yes.
When he, is he able to collect unemployment?
That's not clear to me. That will be in part a determination to be made by the state. You know, the problem I think he would have with regard to unemployment is, he's not able to work right now. So.
Okay. Plus, he's collecting disability right now, short-term.
Yes, so he could, but when that runs out, the question is, what happens? Is he eligible for unemployment? And I don't really know the answer to that.
Well, if he does file unemployment, would the township dispute that?
We'll do like we do with everybody else. We'll explain exactly what the circumstances are in the state of Pennsylvania with determination.
Anything else? Okay.
We didn't vote.
Didn't vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Closed. All right, can I have an interim building code official?
So one of the official positions that Mr. Luft had was to act as our building code official. Because we do our own inspections, it's a requirement in the state of Pennsylvania that somebody have that designation. To be able to be designated that, you have to be, have a certification from the state of Pennsylvania. What we're proposing is that, on an interim basis, we appoint Margaret Russell, who is an employee of CodeSyst, which is a third-party plan reviewer and code enforcement agency that we use. In fact, they're in part who is providing inspection services in the interim while we're in the process of hiring a new building inspector. It's my recommendation that township appoint Margaret Russell to serve as Peter Township's interim building code official.
So she won't be a township employee?
Nope.
We're not paying her salary, we're just paying-
Yes.
We're going to pay what, Coatsys, by the hour?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we appoint Margaret Russell to serve as Peters Township's interim building code official.
All second. In favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, award of bid for, this should be 2021, Peters Township for the paving program.
The engineering department went out for bids for the 2021 pavement program. There were six bidders on the, projected here is a summary of the firms that bid and the prices that they bid. It's the recommendation of the engineering department that an award be made for the base bid, as well as alternate A, which is the parking lot over at the Public Works Garage, alternate B, Joe Matt Drive, and alternate D, Fulton Drive. So if you look at just those items, you can see that A, Liberoni, is the low bidder for the 2021 project. We believe this is in line with what the amount of money that's been budgeted this year. The thing to keep in mind is that we have other work that we do. We have an in-house paving program, we do crack sale, and we do the rejuvenative program. There's restoration behind the curves, but we believe this number is in line so that, in fact, we will not exceed the 2021 budget.
How much is the outtake, do you call?
We, the total amount that is appropriated for the road paving portion is a million seven hundred ten thousand. In addition, there was a hundred twenty-five thousand allocated for the paving of the parking lot at the Public Works Garage. So there's a considerable amount of money left in, to be able to do those other items.
You said addition, those hundred twenty-seven? I thought that that hundred twenty-five thousand was going to be one point seven?
No. There's one point seven million is for the road paving program, and then, in fact, it says here in the second paragraph of my report, in addition, the 2021 budget contains an appropriation of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the road paving program.
Could I ask, we're excluding Brockwood as the alternate? Is there, what was the reason behind that?
Budget, please. We're, you know, I think Brockwood is about forty-five thousand dollars. In looking at the bids and the number that we have allocated to paint roads, we felt to keep a little buffer in there and want to not award that because the one thing that we've been hearing from panel in particular is, this may be a year that will get again with that escalator clause for the asphalt. As everybody knows, construction material prices are always on the board, including asphalt, which has been going monthly. So every year, on the basis of our bid is the March asphalt index number. So what it's going to be in July, when the Denver, when the November, so we felt comfortable not awarding your place, so we had an extra pocket in the budget.
That's reasonable. I thought perhaps it was also because of the construction going on in the plants up there, which would be-
One more.
Thank you for that.
Mark, is that just a part of Brockwood?
Yeah, it was just Brock-
That's a pretty long road.
It was that from East of Paris to Trillium, I think, under its, called that first.
Never thought I'd say this, but I missed the road tour.
That could be fixed.
Next year, there'll be a road tour.
Your bet, that's the idea.
All right, thank you.
Motion?
I thought there was a motion.
No.
I'll make a motion that we approve the paving amount and reward the contract to A, at Liberoni for the base bid, and alternates A, B, and D in the amount of one million four hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed.
I'm glad you didn't forget the sixteen cents.
You got to throw it in.
Any award of a contract for the design of the fire department substation?
So at the March eighth meeting, council took action to table consideration, the award of a contract for the design of a fire department substation. Council requested additional information prior to making a final determination whether to proceed with the project. And that additional information which requested really fell into two areas. One was a request that there be a written document that necessitated a strategic plan or a response plan for various types of fire emergencies throughout the township, assuming that the substation existed. And the second request was for additional information regarding the selection of the architectural design firm for Fire Stations Three. So with regard to the fire response plan, I had requested that Chief Adelakuland and Assistant Chief Bill Gawn draft a report that addresses fire response and staffing and equipment deployment and services offered to the residents and businesses, assuming the construction of Fire Station Three, and a copy of that report that was included in the docket. One of the reasons why I thought it would be good to get Assistant Chief Gawn involved in this is that he works as a consultant for the state of Pennsylvania, has produced similar reports for other communities. I don't want to steal their thunder, but I think you can summarize, you have the clip notes version of this, can be summarized in a series of charts, and then I can turn it over to the chief, and they can provide you more detail if you need it. So the idea is that the township is going to be divided into two fire districts that are serviced by three fire stations. And response is based upon the location and the nature of the call. So on critical calls, there'll be response from all of the fire stations within Peters Township, and as well as North Terbane. And that's, and the same is true for calls within North Terbane. There would be response in critical situations from each of the stations. In terms of medical calls, medical calls are going to be handled out of Fire Station One and Fire Station Three, and depending on whether they're located in that District One or District Two. And then all other calls will be handled in that same kind of fashion, where if it's a call for some other kind of service in Fire District One, it's Fire Station One. If it's in Fire District Two, it's Fire Station Three. Right now, as you can see, there are four large pieces of apparatus that are housed at Fire Station One, and then in addition, there is a pumper at Fire Station Two. The thought is not to acquire an additional piece of equipment, but rather than to take one of the large pieces of apparatus out of Fire Station One and station it at Fire Station Three. The one thing that this does do is it supposes, or is based upon, perhaps accelerating the replacement of the wagon sixty-four. And so as the new station would open, there would be a new piece of equipment in that station. You know, in terms of staffing, what is anticipated in Fire Station Three is that eventually, and this is not, cannot be when the station is complete, because of the cost associated with it, but eventually to have two career firefighters staffing that station seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. And I think this is something we need to grow into, and there needs to be a transition to that. I think there's an opportunity to take advantage of some federal grants that will provide financing, partial financing, as we move in this direction. But I would think this is where you're going to want to end up in the long run. And the reason, the reason why we need to get there in a cautious kind of way is that you're talking about seven additional firefighters to be able to do this, and that is not an inconsequential cost. So when we calculated this out based upon today's compensation for our firefighter, you're talking somewhere between seven hundred sixty-seven thousand and seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars to be able to staff that station in that fashion. And I personally think what we should anticipate is that we will reach that point somewhere before 2030, but we'll assume all of that cost in 2030. So. I don't know. Chief, do you have anything you want to add? And if you do, you have to go through the microphone.
Thanks, Paul, for the actual very nice summary of that. The fourteen pages kind of drones on a little bit, but that is a quick snapshot of what it is that we obviously have been proposing for a long time now. We are a couple cycles into this. Mainly, the aspect of the grants that we can apply for to help assume cost of staffing is something very unique to the fire service. We have been successful in getting awarded safer grants in the past, mainly for volunteer recruitment and retention. That same grant is available for paid staffing as well. Something that I wanted to point out, too, is the way that staffing affects that fire station and the volunteer workforce as well. Within that report, there was a chart to show if that station was built today and the volunteers that we have there today, how our volunteers and our from-home responders would be reallocated to the three stations. It was actually more than I had thought. We geographically placed all of their addresses on a map and found out which station they would go to. In doing this, in talking to a lot of people, they said this was done before, and it was actually done in nineteen ninety-four. I actually got to look back at the old study from Altman Associates that the township solicited in the early nineties and go through a lot of those same maps. And what it was, was reassuring to me, knowing that we were looking at the right data, looking at the right call volume, and where they had projected our population be today is actually right on point. So that is something I had not gotten my hands on until about a month ago. But to go through that data and bring it into this study as well was very reassuring for our purposes. Were there any questions that you guys had for me or for Chief Gawn?
I have a question, I agree with you. If we were open today and staffed with a full complement of fire departments, what percentage of that cost would be could be on seven hundred sixty-three, if you want?
Chief, yeah. If you want to speak to the SAFER grant a little bit, there's a period of performance that the SAFER grant has, and you can hire X firefighters off of that. And one of the main criteria that the SAFER grant likes when you're asking for staffing is to actually open a new station. So if we were to go in two different grant cycles, which can be done and do hiring in multiple phases, you can have a period of performance of up to, what, three years?
Right, three years.
If you want to speak to SAFER, Bill has a lot of experience in SAFER. He's applied for through, this is the volunteer organization, can get volunteer recruitment and retention, and we were a part of when North Terbane did it twice in the early two thousands, actually dating way back to two thousand eight, when I was first hired at North Terbane, was on a SAFER grant. So, Bill?
Thanks, Chief. SAFER grant cycle, it stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response, does three things. First of all, it allows volunteer and combination departments like us to put money aside for recruiting, retention, and recognition. In other words, to build and keep your volunteer workforce. We've been awarded three of those since two thousand thirteen, primarily for retention or recruiting. One, we split with North Terbane because we did it as a regional grant. The other two have been to support our own programs. But the other half of it is for municipalities that have combination and career departments to primarily, the first focus was to prevent fire departments from laying people off. Best example I have that I helped out some friends with was Detroit, where we all know what's happened to Detroit over the last twenty, thirty years, to prevent losing firefighters faster than they lose population. The second is, as the chief said, is on a growth cycle. You can apply for these every year, and they last for three years. You used to have a, had to have a federal matching where they would pay seventy-five percent, we would pay twenty-five, and you also had to guarantee, which wouldn't affect us, that these people would not be laid off for five years after they were hired. Both of those have been drawn. So in actuality, we could apply for one every year, and as the chief said, add these positions incrementally. The fact that we've got numbers based on population growth, on alarm growth, and on basically value of property growth are all going to be positives as they evaluate these grants. I've also had the opportunity to sit on the Grant Review Committee, which FEMA also lets people do, and it's interesting to see how they evaluate them, but a lot of it is looked on in that. They're big, they're, they want to prevent firefighting physicians from being lost, they want to reinforce the volunteer service, but they also want to help communities ramp up over time. And there are large communities, and Detroit's one of them, on the recovery side, that basically apply every year for X amount of physicians, either to keep or add them. And there are growth communities, which we've seen mostly in the South and the Southeast, where with the Sunbelt explosion, that their depart, their population in cities are growing faster than the fire department can grow or be funded because of their tax base, that they apply every year for one or two people over a five-to-seven-year period. There's not a restriction. You don't get restricted on a grant. But again, it's a crapshoot like any other grant. If you tell a good story, you're going to get considered. If we, if we maybe ask for three, we may get three, we may get one or two, and there's a chance you'll get none. What we found, and we just received another FEMA grant for our COVID response for last year, to reimburse our costs and buy some additional equipment, that once you get in the cycle and you're working the grant system properly, basically you're looked more favorable on you're using the system properly because you're reporting results. So that would be our real goal here, when we get to SAFER grants, is to say, we've got these grants for people, we've deployed them, our call volumes are up, but our response times are down. The grant's doing what it was intended to do, and that would be our plan.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
You talked about recruitment, retention, and recognition. It's my understanding that we train our volunteers to the level of being basically firefighters.
Right, and that's part of, that's actually-
So is that under the retention part of it, or is that, so are grants also covering costs of training?
Yes, what we use, a key, and thanks for, thanks for the question, Monica. That question is, what FEMA also wants you to do with SAFER grants is get your firefighters, career or volunteer, to a minimum level of firefighter level two, which is the same as our career people are certified, and, if possible, emergency medical technician. Basically, our most recent grant, and we've asked for a renewal on that because we've used up all the money, is that we do financial recognition for all firefighters who attain firefighter level one, level two, driver operator, or emergency medical technician. Since that grant that we received two and a half years ago, I think we've given out about a dozen of those awards. So they also provide, and paying for the training, the training costs, we actually pay for out of our State Relief Association for the cost of the training, but we use that as a recognition to help firefighters get to that next step.
So the staffing is where I get a little confused, because it's my understanding if we are training our volunteers to be able to respond as our professional firefighters. And from what I understand, our professional firefighters are also, some of them considered volunteers, which is still an anomaly to me.
None of, no, that I'm going to correct. Career firefighters are not considered volunteers, nor can, nor are they allowed to, allowed to volunteer their time.
Is that true?
Yes, you can't, this is a, I've run into this in many studies, working with municipalities. The most recent one is Latrobe got into trouble with this, is they were paying some of their volunteers to be part-time fill-ins for their career staff. Now, once you start to do that, you can't volunteer for your own job. I'm sure your attorneys would, or your HR people would tell you that. So once you do that, and they come in, they kept, they basically have to be paid, once you, they become an employee, if you call them out, even if they're part-time, they have to be compensated at that rate.
Why is requirements are cursed, that being members of the volunteer?
Being members of the volunteer fire company, yes. They, they can be, but they are limited in not being able to participate in, I always get this wrong, I call it a pension plan.
A low staff program.
Yeah, they can't, they can't participate in our service recognition program.
It does allow them to be covered under our life insurance policy, which is, and because we train together, sometimes it helps with our equipment, our equipment used in that training, because if we buy a piece of equipment to train with, say, well, we can only, we can't only train for that for volunteers, we're training everybody the same. The same as the volunteers respond on all the apparatus that you buy, the career people use the breathing apparatus that the volunteers borrow.
Thanks for clarifying.
Sure.
Paul, is our labor agreement, probably opposite of the fire station personnel? I thought there was some new staff, you know, that-
No, no, the minimum, the, under the contract, the minimum staffing is set at a number during the day, I believe it's four.
During the day.
Well, it's three, well, it's three striving for four, is that it?
Yeah, yeah, there's objectives there to do that, but the minimum is three striving for four. Overnight is two striving for three, and that overnight effect is on the weekends.
And that does not- And that does not change by virtue of the fact that you're building this station. Now, having said that, do I expect that when we have our next labor negotiations, that will be an issue? I think it will be.
Well, I think you approach that as we're not adding the staffing to a station. We're not adding the staffing to a district. We're adding these assets to the community. And that's where I think we haven't done, I haven't done that good of a job in explaining this. The municipality of Peters Township, these are the assets in a whole. Yes, they are being distributed out of this fire station, but where I live, off of Hidden Valley Road, I reap that asset as well, because if there's an incident in my neighborhood, the firefighters from that station are responding to that as well. So it's adding staffing to the entire community over time, which is a benefit to everybody.
Another question about staffing, sorry, if anyone else has questions, jump in. You list, or it's listed, there is listed on the suggested design, living quarters for six people. So I'm a little unclear if there's two people on duty at a time, what that number implies.
Well, it's a couple of things. One, you have, we're anticipating two career firefighters there, but it could also be with the volunteer on duty program. If it extends, if that program extends into evening hours, you may have volunteers staying there. The other possibility, when we build, when we go to build this, that we wanted to consider is the possibility that at some point in the future, there may be an ambulance there, in which case there might be a crew that's there overnight as well. So that's how you get six.
And so that's one of the questions that kind of raised a little flag for me, because we already pay the ambulance authority, $109,000, I just signed the check, and we're going to approve it later. So why are we going to also provide them with space for response?
I don't know that this specifically does that. I think it puts that provision in a building that's going to last for multiple decades, the ability to expand into that, whether it be from-
But they answered the question directly, though. I don't know whether the ambulance service has an interest in having an ambulance there. Well, what I do know is that they respond to emergencies just like the fire department does. And the closer you can put that piece of apparatus to those homes, the better the community is served. So if you have a public facility that you're creating, and you can create the capacity to service people in emergencies in a more expeditious fashion, I think you ought to at least create the capacity to do that, whether or not it occurs right now or occurs sometimes in the future. The other thing that I don't know is, and you know, this township should hope that the VFW ambulance service continues on into the future for quite some time, because I understand we're writing the check for $109,000, but it's one of the, one of the big bargains in terms of public service in this community. And it may be that some point in the future that we are responsible for the operation of an ambulance service, in which case it may well be that it would be the fire department providing that service, or it might be some third-party, you know, outside party doing that, in which case, again, I think having the availability of space for emergency response is in the township's interest regardless.
Well, I don't disagree with the idea that, and that's one of the reasons I want this fire station built. I mean, the obvious statistics we've read every month from fire response time shows that this district is being underserved. That being said, fortunately, nothing too untoward has happened. But I guess what I'm saying is, right now, the fire department responds in some ways faster than the ambulance people as it is. So I'm not trying, I'm trying to understand what advantage that's going to be. Again, it's just one more thing we're building onto the station, and I'm trying to understand. I don't want to get into a design conversation right now.
Oh, but understandably so. Any square footage, any square footage you add is obviously going to add a little bit of a cost element to the overall project. So those questions are completely valid, and I think discussing them here is without a doubt the thing to do.
Just one more question. With the current project, if we were to open that station today, could we staff it with one career firefighter and a volunteer this time of week?
Oh, and, no, and our intention is that, that is kind of what our transition plan is, is to start with hiring an additional person to staff that maybe not even seven days a week, 24 hours a day, because every time you talk about a person to staff that kind of time, you're talking about multiple people. That's three or four people to do that. Our intention is to grow into this and use volunteer staff. It may be that some of the staff at the fire station one is moved there, move a person out of there to staff it along with a new hire. That's the plan.
I guess I was a little concerned with, you know, we threw up number 2030, this one with the compliment that gave you place. My opinion, if we're able, we've got to strive to get 20% of the resources possible.
And you can do it in a multitude of ways. We also have, in addition to the volunteer duty program, part-time staffing, you know, what Mr. Lauer set up is worst-case scenario, here's the number today, if it happened, all full-time employees. The way that we've been staffing has never truly been with a full complement of full-time career staffing. We've always used that kind of hybrid model in between, so-
You need the mix.
I think you do. We've seen multiple departments, and this includes two, with Mount Lebanon and Washington that serve to the north and south of us, that use all career staffing at full-time levels instead of the mix of part-time, full-time. And you'll see their staffing levels suffer because of that, and to an extent, their budget. What you do get, you do get a little bit more ownership inside of a full-time employee. It does have its benefits, don't get me wrong. But there's that multitude of ways to skin a cat, if you will. I think the model that we have, the way that we push forward with our full-time staffing, our part-time staffing, and our volunteers, is actually the model that a lot of municipalities are going for. When we talk to surrounding municipalities, and this includes Cecil, with what we do with our staffing of not only volunteers but full-time, part-time employees, this is what strive for in Pennsylvania, and now it's been done in Ohio for a long time. Unfortunately, a lot of places don't use the resources of volunteers anymore. Almost the entire state of Florida, you don't hear of a volunteer firefighter, which is, it's crazy, because you're getting quality help. And to a point that you made earlier, when you said, you know, staffing it with professionals, we strive for our volunteers to be professional as well. I don't like the term professional firefighters. We have paid, and we have volunteered. They're all professionals. They're held to the same standard all around.
Gary, to get to your point directly, and this really is, this really is a question for council to answer on how you want to get there. But if you chose to do that, what you would be looking at is increasing the amount of money we spend on fire protection by about $950,000 a year. And that's probably a 3/10 of a mil increase in taxes. And, you know, certainly, we can do that, do that. You know, one of the things that is different about Peters Township than a lot of the ring communities around Pittsburgh is that we've recognized that there's a need for a combination fire department. I think you have a model here for what can solve a problem that's statewide, but there comes with a cost with that. And other communities don't have that cost, because they're still relying on volunteers, even in situations where that doesn't work. So, I mean, if, as part of the budgeting process, if council next year decided that we wanted to staff this seven days a week, 24 hours a day, with one or two individuals, you can do that. And the thing about the safer grants are, they're diminishing. You know, you start out, and it used to be 75%, and they diminished over time. My, the last time we got a safer grant here, our pay rate was actually above whatever that rate was, and you had 75% of some number set by the Feds, so it actually was less than 75%. So you'll take on that. My only point is, if you did that, you would take on that full cost of this, you know, in a three-year period.
Are there still significant developments or not?
Oh, no question about that. And the thing that, you know, and I'll be honest with you, I never thought about this until I was talking to the chief in preparation to this. One of the things that's different about down in this area than over here, when there's a fire over here, there's all kinds of mutual aid. When there's a fire down here, there's the Findleville Fire Department, and there's nobody else.
Nothing.
And so you can't depend upon anybody coming to this, with the exception of Findleville, Peters Township, and North Trebane, if you have a critical fire. And so in many regards, that station has, will have more challenges.
And you've just made the whole point, in my opinion, that as a responsibility of council is to provide for the safety of residents, this, and staffing this, is a priority, as opposed to recreational amenities. So when you talk about milage increase and tax increase, paying for something like this is more palatable, in my opinion, than paying for something that's not a necessity, need I say, the poor.
Despite it not being, despite this being a necessity, we still strive to do this at a very, very responsible cost.
Oh, I hope so.
One of the things that I take pride on every year when I present budget to council is what our per capita numbers are for the fire department. And when you look around to the other organizations around us, our per capita numbers aren't really that far off from even all volunteer communities like Bethel Park, who does have a fire tax, and does have an obligation in paid fire service debt through that fire tax. So we do very well per capita-wise, based upon our surrounding municipalities, and that's something I think we keep striving for.
Well, I don't think we have to debate any further in that we need a station.
I think we've talked about the philosophy of fire staffing, and the question before us, however, is the design.
Right. And that brings us to the second topic, and that is additional information regarding the architectural proposals. So one of the things that we did at the request of council, you were provided a copy of all 16 proposals. In that, in accompanying this was a, was a list of charts that summarized each of the proposals in terms of what we thought were important criteria. Out of the 16 proposals that were submitted, we chose to interview five, and we got to that five by looking at experience in designing fire stations, prior experience with working with the township, proximity to the township, and cost. And when we got done with that, it was our opinion that EPM and Design Stream LLC stood out amongst those five firms, and quite frankly, we'd be prepared to work with either of them. We do believe that EPM has designed a greater number of fire stations and public safety facilities than Design Stream. Both of the firms are small and intend to use gateway engineers for their civil engineering component. EPM is using tower engineers for their electrical and mechanical systems, and we've worked with Tower on a number of projects. Both firms are local. EPM's proposal is $6,000 less than that of Design Stream. And as I said, you know, based upon those criteria, it's our recommendation that a contract be awarded to EPM for architectural services for the design of fire station three.
Paul, did I read correctly that EPM, their own factory, you want to say?
Neither of them are. I mean, what they're factreading is what we, you normally get with an architect. You don't get construction management. What you get is contract administration. So every two weeks, they would be here doing, doing contract readings and that. I mean, that's what, that's in essence what we do for all of our construction projects. We've never had a construction manager in years.
To speak to that question, though, Gary, Mr. Stogel, they did have, a part of their proposal was for construction management. It was an additional cost based upon what they had in there. I think they were one of the only ones that did include it.
But given the scope of the project, given you're dealing with a single contractor, because we'll build this out as, you know, where you get into construction management issues and public jobs, is that normally you're required to bid multiple primes. And what that construction manager ends up doing is providing the coordination between all the trades. We don't do that. We've done a single contract. And so because, particularly on a project this size, it gets real easy, from the township standpoint, to manage the project, because you're dealing with one entity.
All right, I'll make a motion that council award a contract to EPM Architecture for the architectural services related to the design of fire station number three in the amount of $250,000.
Okay, it's done a discussion in favor?
Aye.
Approve? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for putting all that together.
Like the chiefs.
Next item is change order number two to the contract with A. Liberati for the construction of Rolling Hills Park Phase One project.
So, you know, we have talked about this at a couple meetings with council. Independent of a decision regarding awarding a contract for the construction of the Rolling Hills Aquatic Center, Mr. Zomitis and I believe that the township should move forward with the grading and site work needed to accommodate an aquatic center. If the aquatic center moves forward now, it's essential to complete the earthwork and sites improvements as soon as possible. If council moves forward in the future, the use of Rolling Hills Park won't be disrupted by a large-scale earthmoving project at the time when the aquatic center is built. You know, I think this is an investment in the, in the property, regardless of whether the pool is built now or later, that makes a lot of sense. In his memo, Mr. Zomitis points out a number of reasons why he believes that this makes sense to do, and I think, I stole that for the manager report, because I think Mark has expressed it concisely, but to the point. The fact of the matter is, if we go ahead with the aquatic center, you do not want to have two earthmoving contractors out there and attempting to coordinate the work between the two different contractors. I think it will result in delays and jeopardize being able to finish the aquatics that are in time before doing it now. We've talked about this before. If we're moving ahead with the center and the ideas that'd be open for Memorial Day next year, it is essential that that earthwork begin as soon as it can. You know, the, when we open the bid for the aquatic center in May, it will not be under contract until June. If you don't do this separate from it, it may well be July before the earthwork can begin. We've worked with Liberoni on a lot of, a number of projects at this point. They are a preferred contractor. And then finally, their pricing that we receive for the earthmoving that's part of Phase One is, was low in a bidding process that had a number of firms provide us pricing. I have had a chance to have a discussion with Mr. Smith concerning the, whether or not this approach of issuing a change order is appropriate. In your docket is an opinion from the solicitor endorsing this as an approach. It's therefore going to be my recommendation that Peters Township Council approve a change order number two to the contract for A. Liberati for the construction of Rolling Hills Park Phase One project in the amount of $691,529.75.
So moved.
Second.
For the discussion?
I have some questions.
That makes two of us.
In the engineer's report, it talks about they're going to construct Phase One, blah, 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 blah. It says in various, improvements necessary to develop building pads for the aquatic center. What are the building pads?
Well, what they're going to do is they're going to do the rough grading. So what they'll do is they'll set the elevations, the earth elevations such that the parking lots, the pool area, it will all be on grade if and when the aquatic center gets built.
So if we did not fund-
You'll have a large flat area that can be used.
The whole project. Let's say we don't fund it at all, or let's say we fund part of it. Will we be wasting money, or are these, is this grading to be used any time in the future?
It's, it's my opinion that- It's my opinion that the design of the aquatic center that has been developed is appropriate. And if, in fact, the aquatic center is built this year, that's the design we would be using. I honestly think if that center is built 10 years from now, you would be using that same kind of design. In fact, I would think you would be using that design. And so therefore, what we're doing now would just be an investment in being able to do this in the future. The thing that concerns me...
Yeah, but my question is, is that if they do the excavation work, the grading work, and we decide not to do it, we not decide not to build...
Ever build a, an aquatic center.
Or we decide to build a part of it. Are we wasting money having them doing all that other grading? Will that be good 10 years from now?
I think it will be, because what you'll have is a large, flat, usable area.
Well, we have the township engineer here. I mean, what do you think, Mark?
I'm not sure I'm fully following your question, Frank. I mean, from what Paul says, preparing apples to apples, if you stick with the same design that you already have, then the answer is no, you're not wasting a cent, because the grading work that is contemplated by this change order is exactly what would be needed to construct the aquatic center. I don't see how you'd build a part of the aquatic center.
Well, you could build a spray park, like Frank.
I guess you could. I mean, it would kind of...
Well, but ultimately, if you're gonna...
But the other thing, Frank, is if you decided that there was never to be an aquatic center there, you would have a large, flat pad that would accommodate a parking lot for, and pickleball courts, or something like that. You know, again...
So it could be repurposed.
What's that? Yes, it can be. And you know, the fact of the matter is that Rolling Hills Park, again, it's, if you want to create a usable area that's flat, it's got to be graded. What I was going to say is, the thing that I think to keep in mind is, the thing I don't think you want to do is to develop all of this park. Have this park open, and at some point in the future, say that you want to use this space for an aquatic center or something else, and go into a massive earthmoving project that will impact the use of that facility.
Well, and ultimately, at the end of the day, just even if we don't build the aquatic center, you're going to have a pad-ready site to use for whatever you want to use it for.
Right. The one thing I do know, there wasn't much level land in Rolling Hills.
So can I ask a clarifying question about this $691,000? If we pay that now, and if we go ahead and approve UCC bids, will that particular part of the work come out of that, and that money is saved from the cost of the aquatic center?
Yes.
So there shouldn't be any additional grading or anything required?
Well, this is going, I don't know, compared to what you call grading, this is going to get this down within, what, six inches of foot?
Yeah, I mean, they don't have to swap the parking lot and stuff like that, but that's...
But not all earthwork.
And there will be excavation for the pipes and the drains and parts of that that are part of the facility construction.
Right.
This is not an unusual process.
So the other comment you made, Mr. LaW, was about the timing of this? If this is awarded to Libroney tonight, are you presuming that they will begin to do this grading now, as opposed to waiting until a bid is awarded if we approve you to go out?
Yes. Our intention would be, and we've, and Mark's had this discussion with Libroney, they understand what our motivation is, and they understand the need for this as part of the construction of the aquatic center. So they're going to stage their work to accommodate that.
So that leads me to the rest of the question. They already have a scope of work that they're supposed to be moving forward on. So if this gets put in front of something, what gets left behind? The time?
I have a question. I don't think anything does. They plan on bringing another airport crew on site for the aquatic center. I have a discussion with them about timing and capacity and whatnot, and if you would award this tonight, I don't think you're going to see them out there shoveling ground tomorrow doing the aquatic center, but I do think that early May, you're going to see the aquatic center start to come up around State Street. So, a couple of weeks, you know, I think ultimately, again, as Paul said, probably two months on the front end, because I think July would probably be your all-time deadline to put this up and run.
If we award this to Libroney, will they be allowed to subcontract it?
I guess they could, but this is, the business they're in is earthmoving, and I don't think they're going to subcontract it.
And where's the dirt going, Paul? Is any of it going to be used to build the roadway or anything like that?
Yeah. The aquatic center itself, what we're contemplating is the aquatic center site and on the south side, the loop work there, as I know before, the hot mill, we saw it going. So those are the two big earthworks that will be constructed under this change order. The dirt roughly balances the good things. We have 98 acres out there, we can lose some, rest on the, on that area.
So you do need some of that dirt to build that lower parking lot, then?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the lower parking lot we approved previously as a change order, right?
No, that was the upper parking lot you approved. Yeah, the design change.
Without the aquatic center, this new, the little parking lot, doesn't get it, right?
Now, in the original contract, a portion of this lot was always called for.
There's about a third of the lot, so we're like tripling the size of that lower lot. We had a little parking lot to provide for trail users and bicyclists and stuff, which would kind of act as a launching pad, but if you add that to the aquatic center, they had to be expanding it to call it parking lot.
Well, that's what we discussed a few meetings ago, right? Doing that whole parking lot instead of doing just a part of it?
Yes.
All right. You going to vote, Dave?
Yeah. Do you have a motion?
Yep, Jim made the motion.
All right, man. In favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. All right. Okay, authorized township manager to seek bids for Rolling Hills Aquatic Center.
The design process for the aquatic center has gotten to a point where we are in a position to be able to issue bid documents later this week. I indicated back in February, this is a tight schedule, and it's important that if, in fact, this project, if it's moving forward, that we hold to the timetable that I had submitted at that point in time. Normally, when a project is called out for in the budget, and there's an appropriation provided for it, that we take as authorization to go out and seek bids. But given the nature and scale of this project, I think it's appropriate that council formally authorize a township manager to seek bids. It's my recommendation that we do so, regardless of whether you, at this point, favor or oppose the aquatic center. The fact of the matter is, the township spent a lot of time and effort developing those specifications, and it just makes sense to me that we go out and find what this project actually costs. So, towards that end, it's my recommendation that council authorize the township managers to seek bids for the construction of Rolling Hills Aquatic Center.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. When you, when you seek these bids, is it all or none? Is it going to be the complete project or not? Or are you going to bid everything as an alternate?
Not, no, not everything is an alternate. There will be alternates, but...
Well, what would those alternates be? Because I can't, I just can't support building this monstrosity, given every factor that I can think of, especially the price, I mean, circumstance.
But I don't know, I, in terms of the facility itself, I don't know how you would create alternates in the pools. I don't know how you would do...
Aren't they all separate things? Aren't they all separate?
What is separate is...
There's a lazy river, there's a, there's a thing that dumps the water.
They're all kind of connected.
Yeah, I was going to say, the active pools are all connected and serviced by one filtration system. The spray park is, in fact, separate. The children's pool is separate. But what we were talking about in terms of alternates are, there's going to be alternates for the sliding boards, alternates for the pavilions and shade structures. Do you remember what some of the other ones were? All of them same. Yeah, there are those kind of amenities that are attached to the, to the pool, as opposed to individual pools.
So you almost have to bid the whole, it's going to be the whole thing?
I think it's essentially going to be the whole thing, and the question is, the, what's around the edges of it?
What about the buildings? Because on the design that we last saw, there were basically two buildings with that, and well, I guess they were considered one, there's an entrance gate between them. To what degree are those being designed out?
They're, you mean in terms of being designed and bid? Is that what you're asking?
Well, there were things identified as locker rooms and things of that nature. So, but the rest of the actual schematic, as far as meeting rooms and things of that nature, offices, is that, is it going to be a complete?
Yes.
Design for all of them?
Yes.
Again, the idea is to provide a wide range of amenities that can attract people to want to come for a variety of different reasons.
The key word is amenities.
I mean...
The key word is amenities.
Right.
That aren't actually necessary to the safety of the township.
Yeah, I have a hard problem, I have a hard time spending what is projected to be, you know, 10 or 12 million dollars to build this, when...
But Frank, on the other side of it, to be honest with you, I would like them to prove whether, whatever their name is, Ballard people are actually accurate. They said between 10, 2, and 11, 5 for the, I'd like to know what it's going to cost.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have bid it. I'm just saying that down the road, I can't support spending that kind of money for all of that. I mean, I have no problem with a pool and some other kind of amenities to go along with it, and you know, maybe we could add on to it later, but like, to just make it all or nothing, I just think we're doing it dis, we're, we're disservice to our, to our residents.
This is our chance to get an actual number of what this is, okay?
No, I'm not opposing it. I'm just telling you right now, that...
Well, you've been that way since you began.
I'm not going to, no, I haven't done that, but I have no problem with a, with a pool and some kind of aquatic facilities. I just have a hard problem swallowing what I anticipate to be some huge number.
Well, let's see what the number...
There's no guarantee that, that if you build it, they're going to come. I mean, this is, I think this is a pipe dream, not field of dreams.
Well, Frank, what you and I, I think, agree on is that the initial design and the master plan had a pool, and nobody was really throwing their hands up about that overall. But the design that ended up, out of the committee, is much more extravagant than what initially was laid out in that master plan. So now, I'd like to know what it costs.
Well, no, and I'm on board. I mean, if you want to go out to bid, that's fine. It's just, I'm telling you right now, that if it comes in at some exorbitant number, I can't support that.
That's fine. So let's go out and get a number, and then we can talk about it when we get the number. Okay? So we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One minute? Okay.
So one of the things that I would remind council on, a week from today, we're going to have a workshop on the, with regard to the aquatic center, and the focus of that, in part, is going to be a presentation on the operation of the pool. And, you know, one of the, one of the means by which this pool can be managed is to contract out for that service. And I've invited representatives from sports facilities companies to make a presentation to council with regard to that. You know, the fact of the matter is, the pool will generate lots of part-time employees, and we're really, don't have the back office staff to be able to support the hiring of 150 people or whatever for, for a summer of part-time employees. And I think the services this type of firm has to offer would go a long way to ensuring the success of the pool. And I would encourage you, there's a link in here to their website, to take a look at this firm and what they do at other facilities. In your docket tonight, there's also a, some information from them regarding their qualifications, so.
Could I ask a question? When you send out the RFP for the contractors for the aquatic center, I personally would like to see if I could have, is that any problem?
Well, we can get you one, but the drawings will be a roll about this thing.
I'm not worried about the drawings.
The specifications will be a book about this thing.
Yeah, I just want to see the narrative. You don't have to give me that.
Okay. Are you saying you want, you want the book of specifications, or are you saying the announcement for the, there won't be an announcement for the bid, because we've pre-qualified bidders? You know what, you and I can talk, and I can get you what you need.
Oh, come, when I come to sign checks, I'll sort of read it sometime.
Okay.
Okay, next item is payroll and bills.
Well, you'll be interested to know that the accounts payable checks totaled $934,000 this two-week period. That includes routine expenses, including several utility bills, and two largest payments were for the $109,000 for the ambulance authority, and $334,000 to Libroney for another installment on Rolling Hills Park work. Pay reports, $285,000 this period. There is a credit card statement in there. I move that we approve these bills to be paid.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Correspondence, there is none. Minutes, anybody want to discuss minutes?
I have a question about the EQB. Actually, EQB is a very busy group, but they had referenced the cleanup day, April 24th, in their minutes. Can you tell us how that's been handled?
I, I think what they were talking about doing is something similar to what they did last year, was, was providing bags and gloves to people who want to do this on their own, as opposed to it being an organized township activity. Hopefully, by next year, we'll be back to gathering people together to be able to do that.
Yeah, there are. There are.
Okay, miscellaneous?
A couple of things. First, at your desk, there was a special event permit. The VFW is contemplating having their Memorial Day parade. In anticipation of that, they need to get a permit from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. We have, in the past, handled that for them. The PennDOT has created a new form to be able to do that, that requires council to take action, authorizing an appropriate official to sign.
So moved.
Second.
And I only want to point out to you that in doing so, you're identifying the state of Pennsylvania against any claim that may occur as a result of the parade.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just like to note that we've simplified our one-page approval into seven pages.
At one point, it was a telephone call, so we're, we're making real progress.
I love it. This is going exactly in the right direction. Okay, so any boards report or anything?
There are two appeals coming in front of the zoning hearing board. We wanted to bring those to council, in case council had a position with regard to either of those.
You want to go through the sentence? Do you want me to?
Sure.
We have a request from Vinwell. I think they've actually purchased this property. It's a property on Stone Brook Drive. I forget the exact address, but this lot is a vacant lot. This, this lot was created back in the 1950s. All the other lots around there are developed, and this is the last remaining lot, and they are seeking a variance to build a single-family residence on this lot. It's obvious to us, when we look at the lot, if you go to the survey, it's only a six, it's a lot less than a half-acre lot, it's about a quarter-acre lot. It's 61 feet wide, along Stone Brook, and 187 feet deep. They are seeking a variance to try to put a single-family home on the lot. There's oddly, obviously a hardship here. They can't fit anything on the lot if you apply all our... There's oddly, obviously a hardship here, they can't fit anything on the lot if you apply all our setbacks. So scaffolds are some relief needed here in order to allow this lot to be developed for a single-family home.
I don't see a hardship.
What's that?
I don't see a hardship, they don't have to buy it.
Yeah, except that the lot was already, it was, so this was, this was obviously a conforming lot whenever it was created, right?
It's a legal, non-conforming lot, record.
So, I mean, I don't.
So there's hardship here, whether or not there's the 26 feet needs along that stretch of Stonebrook there for a, to build a house. He would, the applicant would, you know, follow the road of houses here and comply with the 50-foot building line here. You can't, when you apply the 50-foot building line here, it leaves nine feet to build a house. So there's obviously some sort of relief needed in order for a home to be put up.
Ed, is that, the house that they proposed to build, is it going to face that portion of Stonebrook Drive? Or is it going to, is it going to face the curve?
I'm not 100% sure of that, but I, the way that this house is set, we think the front of the house will fade it this way. This will be a side garage company there.
They provided a couple of samples and, you know, one of those is this. And the only way you put that house on, on that lot with those building lines is to face it in that direction.
Well, wait a second, with the porches too? Does his plan actually include the porch? Because the sketch you have there just looks like a rectangle.
Oh, and I, and I'll be honest with you, I don't know whether that fits on there with the porch.
Yeah, that, those are just conceptually the type of home that they would like to put there. It would be in that 28 by 50 foot.
And they're not going to.
1,800 square foot footprint.
They're not going to.
Well, this is a zoning hearing board decision.
Yes, but we.
But they're not going to disturb, there's, is that a sanitary, I can't because it's written backwards.
That's sanitary.
And they got to stay away from that too, obviously, right?
Where are they going to put the garage?
Not 100% sure, but I think on the right side of that proposed house right there would be a side entry garage.
But then they would have to be over the top of the east.
Driveway could be over top, you didn't put the garage there.
I could tell you that my neighbors, since I live down the street from there, are not particularly happy about this development. And quite frankly, I, I doubt that, that, that depiction of the lot size, it might be from the plan, but I don't think that from the curb back to that driveway of that, the next lot, I, I don't, I don't think it's 50 feet.
Well, but ultimately what you have is a lot that was legal at the time it was created. So I don't see how, how, you can't argue that they don't have some sort of hardship because at that time, that lot was legal. I mean, that's what we're stuck with. For whatever reason back then, you know, they approved the lot at that size.
Except it is on the hearing.
Well, but Ed, given what you just said, and even if they approve the variance, they're going to be constricted as far as the footprint of the house, even beyond what our normal allocation is for that size of a lot. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And they will be told that?
Yes.
And they will be told they shouldn't come back for another variance for the porch or anything else?
Oh, yeah, that, if they get a variance.
If they get a.
All the variances that they need will be discussed and granted or denied that night, next Tuesday night.
Second one, Paul?
Yeah, but I was going to say, but as we have said on other occasions, I would agree with you that they should not come back for another variance. But there is nothing you can do that prohibits them from having access to the zoning hearing board and requesting a variance.
Yeah, I agree with that, I'm just saying, go to the well more than once and.
Is that, is that drawing actually a survey?
That is.
Yeah. I don't know, plus I think there's another sewer line down there. The Osford, whether it was, it's showing a wreck or not.
We know that this sanitary sewer exists and we, Peters Township, we have a storm sewer that runs through here. So they, they might be confused with, you know, that.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't know what, I don't think there's much we can do about it. It's just, I don't know why anybody would want to build that.
They want to live next to you, Frank.
No. They're far away from me. And somebody could end up driving right into their house on that curb.
The, the other item that's on the request for variances is for a medical marijuana dispensary that would be located where Rudy Subs used to be, near where Chapultepec is. There is within our ordinance a restriction of 3,000 square feet. They're asking for a variance for an additional 1,500 square feet. And my concern with this is nothing to do with the use because the use is provided for by the state of Pennsylvania. Our zoning ordinance needs to provide for it and we have done so appropriately. What concerns me is that when you start to count up the number of people in this building, you overwhelm the parking that's available. It's, it's difficult to see, but, you know, and this is COVID seating. There are chairs here, there are 18 chairs there in that waiting area. There are six point-of-sale locations at the counter. You have to figure someone's working in that product vault and someone's working in that consulting area. And suddenly you're at or exceeding the number of spaces that are currently in that center. So.
What happened there? I don't know, we're talking about medical marijuana.
So my, my, the recommendation to council is that, I think council might want to oppose this because I think they're going to overuse that site.
Yeah, there's not enough parking there for that. I mean, this is where.
The beer distributor.
The beer distributor.
Beer wash, yeah.
It's just that back strip.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, Ed, I mean, what's the parking requirement?
Well, that parking, that park, that center there is 28 spaces. If it was just for the clinic itself being there, they would require that.
Right, if you got other stores in there.
We, we don't think it's good from a parking standpoint. It's the busiest intersection in our township.
It's terrible.
We recommend the zoning hearing board.
And if council wants to take a position, because you are a part of the, any zoning hearing board case, you should formally take a position because it's one thing for the staff to take a position, it's another thing for council to take a position.
You know, I talked to Paul, I talked to Paul this morning about this because I saw it. And I mean, I, my concern was his concern because I'm somewhat familiar with the, the little dispensary they have out in Washington. And I mean, on the weekends, there's people at the door, around the corner and, you know, and, and, I mean, where are you going to park there? And then you're going to start parking at PNC and all these other places, the CVS?
Well, the traffic, just getting in and out of that.
Now, you can't even make the left out of there, it's almost impossible.
And then you have people making the left into CVS and it'll be crazy.
People are making the illegal turns in CVS.
Well, I have a question about the delivery area too. You have a dock area in the back, if you go back to your.
Yes.
Right, right next to the residence.
Well, that's what I was going to say, that, that appears to be a little concerning, plus.
Well, they deliver beer back there.
True.
Well, but beer isn't necessarily medical marijuana.
Well, beer's, well, beer's a lot noisier.
Well, I'm talking about potential for break-in, I'm talking about potential for people being in there. I, I would, I would.
I think council will take a position.
What do we need, a motion?
I think you need a motion, taking the position that the variance is not warranted.
Oppose it?
Yeah.
Insufficient.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention, you know, we're doing the, we're working with Washington Hospital to do the vaccination clinic over at the rec center this week. About 850 people are scheduled for vaccinations. But the thing that I would like to point out and, and I would like the public to understand is they have pretty much caught up with their, their waiting list. And so if people 16 and older are interested in vaccines, they ought to go to the Washington Hospital site and sign up. Even the people that are getting vaccines this week have only been on that list for a day or two. So there's a real opportunity for anybody in the community to be able to be vaccinated, so. And then finally, we have a request from the soccer association. They would like on, I think it's June 11th or 12th, to once again be able to sponsor their tournament. The tournament attracts between 50 and 70 teams. So you're talking probably over 1,000 people. But the thing that I do believe is having spoken with the head of the soccer association, they have taken into consideration the conditions that are out there right now with regard to COVID. And they're going to do this in a way that separates the teams on the, onto different fields and, and the, as long as PA West requires soccer players to have masks, those children will have masks. So like, for instance, if you would go to Field Five during this tournament, you wouldn't see any more kids on that field than what you would see on a weekend with township residents. The only difference is going to be that you're going to have people come in from the outside. The other thing that I truly believe that by the time we get to June, any adult that wants to be vaccinated will in fact have been vaccinated. So I think, you know, from that perspective, I think the, the risk is, is lower than it would have been last year, so. It's my recommendation that we allow them to go ahead with their tournament.
Need a motion?
No, I just need a consensus of council.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Sounds they're going to adhere to all the guidelines, whatever's in effect.
I think that's right, but will it extend over a longer time if they're going to, are they going to?
They're going to extend it over more spaces so that, so it will not only be at Field Five, it'll be at other, other soccer facilities inside.
Okay, okay. All right, that is for the next agenda.
My question would be, when do we think that this meeting can be conducted without us wearing masks at our table?
I don't know when the mask mandate, I keep getting asked that and that's a Department of Health issue. What is the standard right now is that if everyone in a group has been vaccinated, masks are not required. So I don't know what the status of everybody in this room is. I was just talking to Mr. Ball about this. At the very latest, I would think at the end of June, the beginning of July, we ought to go back to the, the way we are regularly set up. But, you know, we could even do it before that as long as we have everybody who's sitting at their desk.
Have council been vaccinated?
Yes.
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 Well, I got, I got shot number two next week.
Yeah, so it's 10 days after that, I think so, maybe it's sometime in May.
So are you also talking about opening, opening the meetings for regular in-person audience attention?
I think at that point in time, we can do that.
I think we should be talking towards that.
Target mid-May and Frank will be legal.
That's there, we go.
All right, we'll take a plan to make. Okay, do we have an executive session?
Uh, just a very brief one.
Okay, we have an executive session, we are adjourned.